Good evening, and I'd like to call the January 7th meeting of the Pitt County Board of Education to order. At this time, I would ask Shawn Kenny to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you Kenny?
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Worth Forbes will lead us in a moment of silence.
Yes, and on behalf of the employees of Pitt County Schools and the student families of our school system and the Pitt County Board of Education, we pray for the families, staff, and all the students who were impacted with that Sandy Hook Elementary catastrophe that happened in Connecticut, and we send out special prayers. And we also want to remember Dr. Emery and her family due to the loss of her father-in-law, Ed Emery, and continue to remember our students and staff and families, and their will be in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. This time, let's all vote in terms of our presence. I believe we have that. In terms of routine business, is there any adjustment to the agenda?
Move to approve.
We have a motion on the table from Ms. Caminitz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you. The next item under routine business is public expression. The only individual tonight signed up to speak is Mr. Don Cavallini. Mr. Cavallini, are you present?
Yes.
If you would come forward. Mr. Cavallini, as is outlined in the board policy, you have three minutes.
Thank you. And I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I rise basically to hope that we will all recommit ourselves to the best education possible for all of our children in this new year. Even in this time of economic crisis, we must provide a universal quality education. This can't be accomplished if the dedicated servants that provide a school atmosphere where the children can learn are not appreciated, sometimes even harassed and unjustly disciplined. So as you've heard me say before, in our numerous appearances before the board in the previous year, we hope that the very progress needed in these desperate times is not impeded. On August 6th, at the school board meeting, the Pitt County Coalition Against Racism expressed sincere gratitude to the three members of the board who met with workers to discuss their grievances. We talked about the unfairness in hiring, promotion, and in the application of discipline. Since April of 2012, we've appealed repeatedly to the superintendent and to the Board for Justice for Pitt County School Workers. These same workers, just like Greenville sanitation workers, have organized to save their jobs and to expose Pitt County Schools for not removing the vestiges of segregation as called for by the federal courts. We thought the retention of three workers recommended for termination earlier in the year, but reinstated was the recognition by the Board's Human Resources Committee that staff had to be treated fairly. But the ongoing attacks by some principals and other supervisors and the lack of response from the board has proved otherwise. We once again ask to meet with the board because when school workers are encouraged, adequately trained, and compensated, our children have a better opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavallini. This time, under Section C of routine business, spotlight on teaching and learning. Tonight, here with us in discussion of recognition of D.H. Conley High School and recognition of their first-place JV cheerleaders at the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Cheerleading Event is Mary Carter and Paige Herring. If they would come forward, please. It's my understanding they have some other folks with them. Would they like to come forward as well?
I'll give them just a minute to fill in. While they're coming up, Board, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here to showcase some of the students and positive things we have going on at Conley. You can see, we have a very large JV cheerleading squad of 22 members, which is led by Ms. Paige Herring. Ms. Herring is a family and consumer science teacher at Conley. She's in her third year of teaching and her second year as our JV cheerleading coach. She took over last year, mid-year, kind of in a situation where she was just thrown into it, and she has made tremendous strides and brought the squad a long way. So as well as being recognized for their first place tonight, and she'll tell you a little bit about that, I want you to know of the tremendous job that she's done with our girls at Conley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We would first like to thank you for allowing us to come and be here tonight with all the girls and half myself. We did do like a great job trying to strive for this competition. I think we had some of our doubts, but once we got there, we realized that we did a really great job at the North Carolina Athletic Association Competition this year. We won first place, so I think we came on top. We couldn't do any better, obviously. But we would like to continue with our title this year with going to the Coaches Association Competition as well. It's another state competition in Raleigh, and also to the conference competition that will be held in Washington High School this year. So we, of all things, we're just like, we're great to bring some great bright and positive to D.H. Conley's Athletics this year. So I would really like to introduce these girls and kind of praise them on their hard work they've done this year. So start with Riley Tripp. Okay. Ms. Carrie Forns. Taryn Todd. Katie Raspberry. Bailey Glenn. Whitney Stovall. Jessica Seymour. Caitlin Spate. Alexis, ooh, I almost said Jordan, sorry, Van. Madison Burns. Caitlin Purvis. Sarah Bartholomew. Kathleen Chinakun. Jada Harris. Catherine Snead. Shannon Garrett, sorry, excuse me. There's a lot of them. Juliana Hag. And then Kayla Stanley. So again, thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and again, allowing the girls to be kind of showcased on all their hard work they've done this year and continue with their strives to go to the next couple of competitions to get some more titles to bring back to D.H. Conley. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your time. And before you leave, this wonderful trophy that's on display here in front of the board tonight was hard-won by these ladies in terms of what they've done in recognizing Conley High School. So certainly, congratulations to you for your hard work. Ms. Herring, what do you teach at Conley?
Family and Consumer Sciences, so I'm doing the Foods and Nutrition and Teen Living this year.
Very good. I know you're an asset, and I know Ms. Carter's glad to have you there at Conley.
Thank you.
We do have some members that do have some questions or comments they'd like to make. And first was Ms. Council, followed by Mr. Forbes.
Okay.
Forrest.
Forrest and Mr. Forbes.
And me.
Ms. Council?
I just wanted to say congratulations to the beautiful young ladies, and I wanted to hear a cheer.
That's what I want to hear, Bill.
It's gonna be loud. It's gonna go that way.
We got to do one before they leave, Ms. Herring.
In a moment.
Or if we could evolve Mr. Forrest in a pyramid of something, that would be great.
He can be the base.
Would you like them to do the motions is the question?
Oh, well, they probably don't have enough room to do the motions, but we would like to hear the enthusiasm of the cheer.
Swag, swag, yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
Spread out.
Three times, three times like.
Oh, no. Do you know what it's like to be a Viking? Do you know what it's like? Oh, no. Do you know what it's like to be a Viking? Do you know what it's like? Oh, no. We got style, style, we got swag, swag, we got winning this game in the bag, bag. Do you know what it's like to be a Viking? Do you know what it's like? Oh, no. Do you know what it's like to be a Viking? Do you know what it's like? Oh, no. We got style, style, we got swag, swag, we got winning this game in the bag, bag. Do you know what it's like to be a Viking? Do you know what it's like? Oh, no.
Thank you very much, ladies. We certainly appreciated hearing from you tonight. Next was Mr. Forrest.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing, I did want to hear the cheer, so that was half of it. The other half is, I think it's remarkable to win a state championship. Ms. Herring said this was her third year teaching and only her second year with the cheerleaders, and so that is tremendous leadership. We really do appreciate what you do out there. We appreciate what you do for career technical education, but with these young people and everything that they do to encourage enthusiasm at the ballgames, and they just make me want to go and play basketball again. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for all of that. Thank you, ladies.
Mr. Forbes?
And you know, this is an honorable award, and it's a very distinguished-looking group. And behind every wonderful award like this, there's always a leader. And I know all of you are leaders because it took all of you together, working together, to receive this award. And thank you to Ms. Herring and to Ms. Carter for what your support in having these young girls do what they did. That's a great honor.
Ms. Herring?
Yes.
Sorry. What experience did you have with cheerleading?
I did middle school and high school, but then once I got to college, I did, I went through the Teaching Fellow Scholarship Program. So with that, there's a lot of requirements with that, so I've never went into and continued on cheerleading.
Well, your experience is well-served.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Any other comments? Ms. Williams?
I'd like to say congratulations to you young ladies, but I also like to thank the parents, who I know have given you so many rides and supports, and your brothers and your sisters, because I know what that feels like. So I just want to say, just keep up the good work, and thank you, Ms. Carter and Ms. Herring, for the work that you've done. But most of all, I'd like to thank your parents and your big brothers and your big sisters for their help along the way.
Thank you very much. Let's have another round of applause.
As the girls are being seated, one other thing I wanted to say is there were over 100 teams that competed for the JV cheerleading. They competed in the large-team division, and there were 15 schools in just the large-team division, so it was quite competitive.
Yep. Very good.
Wonderful way to start off the new year in terms of our board meeting. That's a wonderful way to do that. Next item on our agenda is for consent items. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Forbes.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Mildred Council. Any discussion? There being no discussion, let's have a vote. Next item on the agenda under new business, Section 6, is Section A, an update on educational programs and services. Tonight, Mr. John Coleman.
Good evening.
What is being passed out to you is an item that goes along with the school improvement grant that you addressed two years ago when the first grant was created, and that was a pay-per-performance plan. At this time, we need to make some adjustments to that plan. As you know, the state no longer has the ABC program for recognition for EOC and for testing, and as a result, our plan had some of those categories involved with it. And as we go into this, or as we're in the last year of the grant, we felt like we needed to make some changes to address where we stand right now. What you see before you is on the front page, the pink page, is some of the results from the pay-per-performance plan for the last two years. You'll note that in the 2010-11 school year, the board actually addressed this towards the end of the year, so teachers and staff really didn't have much chance to prepare or plan for it. And so you can see how each of the schools came out in each category. However, this last school year, because all of the faculty and staff knew what the results or could potentially be, you can see that we've made some substantial gains in just about every category. The only one, North Pitt, did not qualify for a campus award, so there were some changes or adjustments there, but in every other category, you can see that there was improvement and that the plan did have an impact of some kind. If you have questions on that, I'd be happy to entertain them. If not, if you'll move to the next page. The yellow page is the plan in its current form. Then the page behind it, in orange, is the plan that we would like to have with adjustments. And you will see that on that plan, we have dropped the EOC category award, we have dropped the CTE category award, and the EVAS Teacher Effect Award, all three being affected by the ABCs in some form or another. As a result, we've consolidated some of the categories, so under all 912 teachers, that now includes all EOC, CTE teachers, art, music, and so on. All teachers now fall under that category, and as a result, we want to keep the attendance award, the attendance goal, and that would be if two absences or less per semester, each employee would earn up to $200. The Class Differential Award for those teachers teaching their at-risk English and math courses, keeping the Campus Progress Award. And then you'll see the last column, which would be the maximum possible if the employee hit in every category they were eligible. At the bottom of the Campus Progress Award, you'll note a change there. The four-year graduation cohort rate would have to reach 75% or higher, or if already at 75%, a 3% increase over the previous year, and that would be the case for South Central High School. And/or a Grade B under the new state's formula or higher under the state accountability model. Any questions?
I do.
Ms. Williams?
On the campus, on the campus award?
Mm-hmm.
What was the qualifications for that?
For the campus award, the school as a whole, its four-year graduation cohort rate would have to be 75% or higher, or, under the new state accountability model, a Grade A or B for the school. And if the school can reach either one or both of those, then every employee in every category would be eligible.
At all grade levels?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman, it's my understanding there's also possibly some discussion on that Grade A or B, or the grading system that's going to take place, possibly by the State Board and the Legislature, maybe this month or next month.
That's correct.
And what would those requirements be?
Well, we don't fully know at this point. What we know is that with the ABC model, we won't have the designation of high growth or at-growth or no recognition at all. What the Legislature has done is they've put in place an A, B, C, D, or F model. However, the Department of Public Instruction is still trying to determine the criteria that will fit into that. However, we believe that whatever that criteria will be, is that an A and a B would still be considered good progress, and that's what we would recognize.
Mr. Forbes?
So what you're saying is changes that possibly may be made, this would still fit any of those changes?
That is correct.
Any other questions from members of the board, or is there more time needed to review this before action by the board?
Do we need to vote on?
That's what I'm willing to entertain, is possibly a motion to move to the next
board meeting, or possibly a motion for approval. What are you seeking, Mr. Coleman?
Well, we would like to be able to let our faculty and employees know, you know, as soon as possible what the actual, you know, standards are. Right now, they're looking at the old plan, which they know will not fit. So questions are being asked, you know, how will we react to it? This is how we propose to react to it, but we would, you know, we need board approval before we can really talk to our faculties about it.
Before Ms. Caminitz speaks, Mr. Forrest, did you have a question?
I did. Mr. Chair, thank you all. It's a follow-up question Mr. Forbes asked about, would this fit under any kind of changes? What was your question?
My question was, if the state made changes?
Yeah. I was seeing this post-assessment here. Suppose that, for example, that the board chose to go in a different direction with some of the post-assessments as they affect career technical education, then would you have to go back and take another look at how you?
We don't believe so. What we're looking at in terms of, you know, what the state's accountability is, you know, the state is already looking at what's called the Ready Accountability, and that is including the ACT, College Readiness, the Future Ready Core, completers, and the Work Keys, as well as the EOC Accountability. So we feel like, you know, those components, while we don't know how each might be weighted, we feel like those are the components that are going to be, you know, used for that grade.
I would say this, in Mr. Coleman's defense, I think the state is making a lot of decisions as they're going along this year, and certainly he, as well as boards, are in an untenable position of trying to make decisions. This makes it a little more difficult in trying to have an incentive program. I think with the best possible data that we have now from the state, this is a sound program in as much as we can have, although there are some things that are changing monthly, as you could say.
I would say that if the state came back and surprised us significantly, and we felt like something was very out of line, we could probably come back before the board very quickly and look to make an adjustment if necessary.
Ms. Caminitz?
I move that we approve the Performance Pay Plan for South Central, Pharma Central, and North Bay High Schools for the 2012-13 school year, the orange sheet.
Second.
Second.
Been a motion by Ms. Caminitz, a second by Ms. Williams, a second by Mr. Kenny. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda for this evening is a board approval, as listed in our agenda, is requested for resolution for the Pitt County Schools Board of Education regarding sequestration. Mr. Cowan?
Hey, good evening. Last week, President Obama signed into law and measure to avert the fiscal cliff, and that was, had previously been approved by Congress. Although the measure did make permanent the middle-class tax cuts, the measure did not remove sequestration that was scheduled to go into effect on January 1st. Basically, it pushed that back two months to March 1st. Sequestration is a self-imposed penalty enacted by Congress that would cut over $1.2 trillion across many federal programs, basically all federal programs over the next decade. Delaying the sequestration for two months has now linked that to conversations concerning the debt ceiling, which must be also dealt with over the next couple of months, or the federal government could risk default on its debt obligations. Sequestration alone, again, $1.2 trillion over the next decade across all federal programs, that's about 8.2% to the education budget, which over that timeframe would be $2.7 billion cut to federal programs such as Title I and Students with Disabilities, dollars that have been dedicated by the federal government to serving our most at-risk student populations. What does that mean to Pitt County Schools? That can mean over a million-dollar reduction, again, just in program dollars dedicated to serving our most at-risk students. Given the reductions that, and we're not in this alone, as you can see, I mean, $2.7 billion across the country, the kind of cuts that local school systems have seen over the last several years with the state and local dollars, be almost impossible to absorb that through the state and local budgets. So therefore, tonight, standing and sitting in front of you is a resolution that would be sent to Congress and to the President urging them to amend the Federal Budget Control Act to mitigate the cuts to education that would have a devastating impact on our most at-risk students. And again, these are the dollars dedicated to serve students with disabilities, as well as those deemed to be most economically disadvantaged across the country.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Questions or comments from members of the board? That is included in your board booklet on Pages 41 and 42, and has been for your review. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Mr. Forbes makes the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Forrest, a second? Could vote, please. Any discussion? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Next item on the agenda tonight is an update on focus groups for athletic eligibility and policy revision. I did speak with Dr. Emery concerning this today. Dr. Emery did want to let members of the board know, obviously, as we know from our discussion at board meetings, that this is very much so at the forefront of the senior leadership, as well as for this board, in making sure that we're making very calculated steps in the right direction in terms of athletic eligibility and in reviewing that policy. And that was her comment, and I would like to echo that sentiment. Is there any further discussion by members of the board? Ms. Williams?
Focus groups. What focus group? Consistent of who?
I would say-
Is it be scheduled times?
In terms of, when I saw this, in terms of focus groups, I had taken this to mean in terms of committees, in terms of the policy committee, in terms of their work with that.
So so committees already in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that question, Ms. Williams. Are there any others? Next item on the agenda is for the board discussion regarding board committees and hearing panels. I specifically wanted this put on for discussion, and in fact, I think the paper did a nice job of covering the committee assignments and so forth, and as you can see in your board book and in the packet that was sent out, the committee assignments have been made. I wanted to be very transparent in that, in terms of members of the board being able to request committees to be on, and I made clear in terms of chairs, if you did not request a chair, that I would put individuals in charge of those committees based on longevity and/or experience on the board. Taking a look at Pages 44 and 45 in the board book, at this time, I would entertain any discussion that we have regarding that, specifically Page 45.
I do.
Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, on the Human Resources Hearings Panel, since Bishop Love will not be returning, I would like to have that spot.
Human Resources Hearing Panel?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Since I'm the Chair of the Human Resources Committee. Since I'm the chair of the Human Resources Committee.
I would be open to that. Would like to say, when we get down to our next section, which will be dealing with Bishop Love's resignation, I would like for the new member to be a part of these committees, so maybe we can make mention of that in the next section as well. Ms. Camnet's?
Two comments, Mr. Chair. I noticed that Transfer Hearings only has three people, and I got a call from Ms. Pippin on Friday, or an email, asking me if I could stand in. She wasn't able to get three people to hear some cases tomorrow, and I would just respectfully suggest that one more person might want to be added to that, because it's the most frequently used hearing panel.
I would say I had not had a lot of express interest on that committee. In fact, I had to make some appointments to that committee. Is there anyone in open session now that would be interested in serving on the transfer hearings?
I would be willing to if no one else is, because I think it's important to have four people on there.
Ms. Camnet's?
Yes.
Be added to the transfer hearings.
And in the same spirit, I noticed that Human Resources only has four members. The other committees have five, and I'd be happy to serve on that if there's any interest in having an additional member there.
On the Human Resources Committee.
Would it, may I insert a comment?
Ms. Waters?
I'd like to say for all these hearing panels, but especially this transfer hearing panel, we all need to be prepared to step up in order to make sure that we're adequately represented. So, if you're called and you can, please do.
Ms. Camnet's, would you still like to be on the Human Resources Committee?
I would be happy to serve on that.
Adding Jill Camnet's, Ms. Pippin, to the Human Resources Committee. Any other discussion about the committees and hearing panel assignments for this year?
Only to clarify...
Mr. Forrest?
With the changes, then, Human Resources will still have four members, with one of them being Jill Camnet's. Is that correct?
Actually, that is incorrect. Mrs. Williams, in light of our next agenda item, which is to receive Bishop Ralph Love's resignation, will be serving in Bishop Love's place on that committee.
On the hearings?
On Human Resources.
I was talking about the Human Resources Committee.
It's showing that Mary is the chairman of that committee.
Correct.
She talked about the hearings panel.
Yes, I'm sorry. Were you saying hearings panel?
Yeah, I think Mary was talking about that.
I was talking about the hearings.
Hearings.
I'm the chair of the Human Resources Committee.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I placed it on the wrong one.
Under the hearings panel.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest.
I'm just saying, I'd be willing to serve as a fifth member of the actual committee, not the...
Thank you.
So, that whoever replaces Ralph would still have a slot there on that committee.
Mr. Chair, when you get it all straight, go through those committees with us, so we'll know.
Yes. Are there any other questions or discussion? So, for Finance Committee, Benji Forrest will be chair, Barbara Owens will be vice chair, Mildred Council member, Sean Kenny, member, and Billy Peeden, member. Under Policy Committee, Sean Kenny will be chair, Chris Waters will be vice chair, member Jill Camnet's, member Barbara Owens, and member Worth Forbes. Under the Operations Committee, Worth Forbes will chair that, Chris Waters will vice chair that, member will be Sean Kenny, member will be Mary Williams, and member will be Jennifer Little. Under the EPS Committee, I will chair that committee, Jill Camnet's will be vice chair, Benji Forrest will be a member, Mary Williams will be a member, and Chris Waters will be a member. Under Human Resources, Mary Williams will be chair, Barbara Owens will be vice chair, Jennifer Little will be a member, Jill Camnet's will be a member, and the to-determine member of that will be, should the resignation of Bishop Love be accepted, will be the member of that committee. Under Human Resource Hearings, Barbara Owens will be the chair, Mildred Council will be a member, Chris Waters will be a member, Mary Williams will be a member, and the to-be-determined member, again, should the board accept Bishop Love's resignation, will be a member of that committee. Under Transfer Hearings, Chris Waters will be the chair, Barbara Owens will be a member, Mary Williams will be a member, and Jill Camnet's has been added to be a member of that committee. Under Discipline, Jennifer Little will be the chair, Worth Forbes is a member, Sean Kenny, member, and Mary Williams is a member. Under Attendance Promotion and Graduation, Sean Kenny will be chair, Jill Camnet's is a member, and Barbara Owens is a member of that committee. Further questions or discussion?
I have a question. The attendance promotion graduation, why does it have only three? Owens have four.
That's been historical. That committee was begun last year, I believe it was, as a new committee, Understanding Committees, two years ago, I'm sorry.
And what's their role, again?
Reviewing attendance cases that come before the board, promotion cases that come before the board, and graduation-related issues that come before the board.
I have an interest in that one, but it's been three, so it's in stone for three?
I'm sorry, Ms. Camnet?
Is it in stone for three only?
No, ma'am.
That hearing panel would welcome Ms. Counsel with open arms, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Counsel, would you like to be added to that committee?
Yes, I would.
We're adding Mildred Council as a member of Attendance Promotion and Graduation. Thank you, Ms. Counsel, and all others for your willingness to serve on those committees. Any further discussion related to that? All right. Next item on our agenda is item E, which is the board acceptance of board member Bishop Ralph Love's resignation and follow-up process. On page 46, you will see, I'm sorry, page 47, a letter from Bishop Love, which I will read. It says, "Dear Chair Witcher, it is with sadness that I tender my resignation as a board member of the Pitt County Board of Education. Due to health issues, I feel I must cut back on my obligations and allow time for healing. I'm truly appreciating my 20-plus years being a board of education member and serving the children in Pitt County schools. In the days ahead, I pray the students will be your first priority, and unity of the board will move forward. Sincerely, Ralph Love, Pitt County Schools Board of Education member." I feel first that we should formally accept Bishop Love's letter of resignation. This is a difficult thing. I know Bishop Love, perhaps maybe we should have some discussion before formally accepting that, but I know Bishop Love has been sick for some time, and Bishop Love has given tirelessly and selflessly of himself for over 20 years, in terms of his formal position on this board of education, but in terms of service, spans many more years than that. Bishop Love is an individual of the utmost character and respect in this community, and so many more good and positive things I could say about him, but he's truly a gentleman and a scholar, and I am saddened that he, his health will not allow him to continue on at this point. Any other discussions, Ms. Counsel?
I regretfully accept it, and I understand, you know, his illness and health issues and health is key to all of us as individuals, and so I'd just like to say I have appreciated my working with him, serving in the same district, in different seats, and so I would like to say we accept his resignation, make a motion that we accept his resignation.
Ms. Mildred Council has made a formal motion that we accept the resignation of Bishop Ralph Love, second, on the Board of Education. We do have a second from Mr. Kenny. Is there any further discussion?
This would be a good time, I guess, to make some comment about Bishop Love as well. I'd just like to say that I have thoroughly enjoyed serving four-plus years with Bishop Love. He is a tremendous gentleman. The very first thing that comes to my mind is Ralph's a gentleman, and he truly is, of the old orient, and his word is his bond, and that's more that we can say for a lot of people these days, and what he tells you, you can count on and bank on. And the community that he lives in adores him, respects him, and appreciates all of the good things that he does to try to communicate and try to bring about peace, harmony, and goodwill to that community, and show leadership. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss him. I'm going to miss his advice, his counsel, and he has a peaceful resonance about him that allows for unity and lack of disharmony. And so, I regretfully do second Mildred's motion, but I understand that we must move on and provide for this in a formal sort of way, and so I regretfully do second that motion and make all of those comments with all due regard and respect for a great man.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. Forrest. Further discussion, Mr. Forbes?
You know, I hate to see him leave the board. He's always, he's been a man of high integrity, and I appreciate all the support that he had given me over the years, and you could always call him and ask his advice, and I know when one receives support and guidance from him, it was from his heart. And going back to what Benji said, when he told you something, he stuck to it. He was a man of his word, and you didn't have to doubt that. When he promised you something, you knew that he was not going to change, and I respect him for that, and you don't find that in a lot of people nowadays. And he's, was a fine, he's a fine person, and I just hope that his health continues to improve, and that he focuses on himself and his family, and he is going to be missed by this system. He has touched so many students' lives by the policies and procedures that he has helped implement over the years, and he's just a great man with a lot of service that he has given. He's looked after faculty, students, and this board, he's been dedicated to this board over the years, and I know this was a very, very difficult decision for him, and he made it from the heart.
Mr. Forbes, Ms. Waters?
That, he pretty much summed up what I wanted to say, but Ralph was a calming presence. He was a man that you felt comfortable working with, and the fact that he did resign, I think probably hurt him immensely, because he wasn't finished with this board. He wasn't finished doing the work that he loved, and he was very selfless in doing that. But after losing Michael and Matthew, I admire this man greatly for the fact that he put his health and his family ahead of his own desires to keep working with this board, and I hope I have an occasion to work with him again.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Ms. Camnet's?
Ralph and I sat behind this table for a lot of years, both of us working as best we could for the interests of the students of Pitt County, and it's not going to be the same without him.
Thank you, Ms. Camnet. Are there any others?
I echo all the comments that everybody's made, he is a man of integrity and a fine, honest person. Is there going to be an opportunity for us to recognize him more officially than, in plan that? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owens?
I'm happy for him. I know he's going to enjoy every Monday, first and third Monday nights, and I'm just delighted for him. Go for it, Ralph.
Mr. Kenny?
The things I would say about Ralph, I've had the pleasure of saying to him personally, so that's why I'm holding off on public comment, because what I've had to say to Bishop, I had the pleasure of saying to him personally. But I would like to thank his family. You know, and we all on this board are on loan from someone at home for a lot of hours, and for Bishop Love's family, it was for a two-decade span, and we, the whole community thanks them for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments?
Just like to make one final point, that we're gonna miss having love on this board. That was his motto.
We could have a formal vote, I guess, in formal recognition of this, at this time. Batteries must be running a little low in this, Ms. Man. In light of that vote, it is unanimous to recede Bishop Love's resignation. At this time, what I would like to do is articulate a process for the replacement in the interim prior to the next election for Bishop Love's seat, very similar in fashion to what we've done in previous vacancies on this board, which I believe is to advertise for a period of time. Mr. Sue, I'm sorry, I hope this is not catching you off guard, but in terms of procedure and protocol for that, do you have any recommendation or guidance to us at this time? For everyone that is not familiar, Mr. Sue is our new board counsel from Tharrington Smith Law Firm. Certainly, we'd like to welcome Mr. Sue, being our first board meeting tonight.
Thank you very much. I would advertise in the newspapers, the general circulation in the county, and of course, you have to get, at some point, the chair appoints a committee of, and if I've calculated the numbers right, was Bishop Love, seat B?
Yes, he's B.
Seat B of District One. And I believe, Mr. Sue, and board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, we advertised for a period of a month. We advertised in the reflector, as well as on the board's website. We received interest in terms of resumes, and then those individuals that were given a chance publicly to introduce themselves, to state their interests, explain their resume, perhaps, and take questions from the board.
The previous two times, excuse me, you have, the previous two times, we have done the advertisement. Based on the direction of the board, you have approved suspending the bylaws temporarily, and I mean, Ken would have to answer that process if you want to follow that, but what he's saying is different than what you've done the previous two times. In other words, you have a process...
So, your bylaws have a process where the chair appoints a committee of either seat A or seat B members, depending on the designation of the vacancy, and is that committee that establishes the timeline and oversees the process? So, it sounds like that wasn't the process you used.
We changed the bylaws. We've changed those bylaws.
In the interview before us.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at what you have online.
At what we did, if I'm correct.
We suspended them.
Just speaking in terms of that, was we made a motion to suspend the procedures, the bylaws, and then to adopt a motion in terms of how we would proceed, and this is the part that I'm seeking guidance from you on at this time, is to, one, if it's best to move with that again, or two, what is the will of the board in terms of how to proceed? That's what I'm interested in hearing tonight, is do we want to follow the individuals, Bishop being the seat B member, if Bishop would be interested, or if we, as a board, want to follow that same pattern, or if we want to have full board participation in terms of selection of that member? Mr. Forrest?
I would love to see the full board involved in it for a couple of reasons, but one is, if we go by policy, if I'm not wrong, then that means Ms. Counsel would not be able to be a part of that, because you are A, even though she is in the same district and know the same people and has a very good understanding of that community, she would not be involved if we follow policy.
Well, and I would echo that sentiment. One of the main things that I want to carry forward again is inclusiveness on this board in terms of member participation and individuals participating. Ms. Williams, were you, did you have your hand up?
No.
Ms. Camnet's?
I'm a little confused, because I'm online looking at our policies and procedures. What, and bylaws 1.104, what are you looking at, Ken?
I'm in Procedure 1.301. Procedure to appoint new members.
Our bylaws say vacancies should be filled by appointment by the remaining member, the members of the board, so it sounds like we've got two different things going on here.
This is your appendix, and maybe that you didn't change your appendix.
Maybe we could go back and look in the minutes to see if we actually changed that after we did this the last time, because my recollection was that we did change it. And we did away with that Seat A, Seat B procedure.
Rather than just suspending the rules temporarily.
Mm-hmm.
Do you remember which meeting that was?
It would have been during the time, during the time we-
It was March. March 2012.
Yeah, it was March. She was appointed in March last year, so.
Okay, hold that sentiment for just a minute. If we could, and could we at least have, I think this may buy us some time to investigate this particular procedure. Could the board agree that at this time, for a period of 30 days, we will advertise, gain interest, resumes from individuals through the reflector, a local publication, from our website as well, from individuals within the community that reside within the District One boundaries, that they could submit letters of interest along with resumes? And then, from that point forward, at our February meeting, that will give us some time to either, one, decide to stay with our policy or to suspend the procedures? Mr. Sue?
And certainly, if you proceed on that basis, if you just take a motion and a second to proceed in that manner, that will deal with any issue of necessary suspension of the policy.
And then, if we need to come back and suspend the policy at our February meeting, that would take into account if there was a variance that we dealt with during that time. Is that amenable to everyone on the board? Mr. Kenny?
Mr. Chair, I move that we advertise and accept letters of interest for the vacant seat on the Pitt County Board of Education to end on March 8, 2013, at 5:00 p.m. February 8th.
Okay.
2013 at 5:00 p.m. That should definitely cover 30 days and give an end date.
Second.
We have a second from, motions made by Mr. Kenny and second by Ms. Counsel to advertise for the vacancy. Would you restate that date?
February 8, 2013 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you so much. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Let's vote, please. And it is unanimous that we proceed in that? Thank you.
I'll just review the minutes and-
Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is the discussion of the weight of the EOC, the end-of-course exam as an exam grade. Ms. Olmstead, I had specifically asked this be put on the agenda, and at this time, if you don't mind, I would like to give some articulation of that to the board. And then, if they have some questions of you or I, then we can proceed with that. The state made a ruling, I guess, if you will, the state board, that exams and, of course, tested subjects do not have to count as 25% of a student's average. However, they've also given that to local boards in terms of making those decisions. Pitt County Schools does have, of its board policy, as most LEAs that I'm aware of do, that the exam counts as 25% of a student's grade. The state had given some mixed signals in terms of how that would be able to be made up, in terms of what that would look like, and they have since come back and said that we would be able to get some data from the scanning, the wind scan system, in terms of what that data would look like. My concern was, is that the accountability piece. Teachers, as you know, now have standard six, principals now have standard eight, which says that they are accountable for the performance of their students. My concern was, is that the state was saying students will not be accountable, but yet, from these data that are going to be gathered, that the individual schools, principals, teachers would be accountable and students would not be. There has to be a continuity within that system in order for it to work. As anyone knows that's been in the system where you basically have benchmarks, you need to have a very firm carrot in place in terms of enticing students to take those things seriously and to work if there's not a grade attached to it. And so the significant factor here is that we are able, or the system will be able to, as in fact, most systems will be able to compute a grade. So this issue basically now becomes a null in terms of us taking it up at this point now. Are there any questions? Ms. Olmstead, do you have anything to add to that?
No, you just heard Joe.
Are there any other questions or concerns from board members? Ms. Camnitz?
I just totally agree with you that student accountability is absolutely critical.
Well, the issue becomes basically that you don't want students finishing a 50-question test in 50 seconds and then saying, yes, I took it seriously. And that's in fact what would happen. In not all cases, I think we should respect the overwhelming majority of students that would take it seriously, but still, that piece that kind of marries them up in the relationship piece with their accountability is very important. So I think that's in place. Ms. Counsel?
My question is, that's the end of your course test for the, what grade levels?
All-grade level.
All-grade levels, okay.
High school. High school.
It's high school, and it's three subjects.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, high school, yes. It would be three subjects, Integrated Math 1, or the old Algebra 1, English 2, and Biology.
Okay. So if a student has done well all year and has-
Understanding that this represents no change in policy.
Okay, no change.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, because that was a little bit more discussion.
There was some anticipation that there would be a change by the state, but at the last minute, they changed back again.
So what are we getting? I'm a little confused.
As I said before, the issue becomes null in terms of us taking this up now.
Okay, so we-
It's incorrect.
So just leave it alone.
Yes, since the time I asked what would be placed on the agenda. Again, talking about the issue we talked about with Mr. Coleman beforehand, a lot of individuals, senior leadership, are in untenable positions because the state is making very quickly, rapidly evolving, changing decisions as the year is progressing.
From before the holidays to after the holidays?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
So this item requires no action.
Okay, so that's good. Thank you.
Any further questions?
That's good.
Good job, Jill.
As Dr. Emery is not with us tonight, there will not be comments by the superintendent. In terms of comments, I would like to thank everyone for this new board meeting, this new start, and appreciate the support from the board members, from members of the staff of Pitt County Schools, members of the community. I want to assure you that it is my goal, as I understand the goal of this board, for us all to work hard, to be well-engaged and knowledgeable of things that are coming through the pike, and to do the work of the people, and to work hard on behalf of every student and educator in this county, as well as the citizens of this county, to conduct business as frugally as we can, to be thankful for the resources that we do have, and to maximize them across this district to benefit what, in my opinion, is a very powerful system in terms of the resources that we have, with a wonderful university system, community college system that we have, and well as healthcare systems, banking industry, and so on, as well as certainly, farming community, and all that they do to support Pitt County Schools. So I thank them, and I hope that they will become engaged, if they are not, in supporting our system as we move forward this year. We'll start with Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I wanted to compliment you on the process you went through in assigning committees and hearing panels. That was certainly transparent. I think it set a good precedent for the future, and I think that that went very well. I hope everyone had a good holiday season. I will miss Bishop Love. And having gone undergraduate at Providence College, as it turned out, a few of my classmates, their children were affected by the terrible tragedy that took place in Connecticut. They've been in my thoughts and prayers. I'm very proud of the Pitt County community and their response to that tragedy. It was very irrational act, and it, I'm sure we're all united that we're very dedicated to take the steps to make sure nothing like that would take place in our school system. And we thank the community for trusting us with their children. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kenny, Ms. Counsel?
Okay, well, I'd like to wish all of you a Happy New Year, as well as all of our, the public school family, as well as our other families out there. And I'd like to thank, say thanks to the parents who are taking charge of their children's lives, and especially in the disciplinary area. We have got to do better, and I want this, make this your best year of making sure you communicate daily with your children and see how and what they're doing on a daily basis. Talk with them. Train your child the way they should grow up so that their future would be brighter and that they will stay out of trouble, and make them accountable, and making sure that they are safe. I'd like to say to our administrators, all our school families that's working with all the children, continue to do the best job that you can. This, this is a new year, this is a time, whatever has not been right, we can make it right, and just make sure we do the very best job possible. And having been here since March, I'd just like to see lots of improvement, and looking forward to a brand-new 2013. Will be giving my best to serve all of our children, faculty, staff, and family to the best of my ability, and to Godspeed with all of our total Pitt County community.
Thank you, Ms. Counsel. Mr. Forrest?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to just wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hope their year goes well so far. I look forward to working with this board again this year under the new leadership. Look forward to working with Mr. Chair, and we've had a tremendous two years together. Mark has always been great working with you, and I know it'll continue to be so. As chairman, you're very dedicated and very capable to lead our group and do it well. I also would like to take this time to say that we are, at the same time that we have a new chair, we're going to be losing one of our board members with Ralph, and we're definitely going to miss Ralph and his leadership and the unity and the harmony that he exposes and expresses with this, with this board, and so we will miss that. Also, like to thank again D.H. Conley and the excellence that they showed tonight with their junior varsity first place in the state with their cheerleading. I thought that was just an outstanding representation of our school, and just one more example of the excellence that we seek and offer here for Pitt County Schools. And then, last but not least, always, if you want to count on something and commitment, you can always look out in the audience, and you can always see Commissioner Tom Johnson. And I want to thank Tom for continuing to represent the county commissioners as the representative here to this board, and Tom, we continue to thank you for being a part of that, and hopefully, all the things that we do around this board, you can carry back to the commissioners, and we can continue that great support system that I think we both, we both have had, at least for the last two or three years. And I've been very, very appreciative of the working relationship that we have with the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Ms. Owens?
Here's some prayers to the Emery family, and I would like to thank Ken Sue for his long trek here from Durham, and I appreciate your being with us.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Mr. Forrest?
I look forward to working with this board this year on a new level. I think we really need to concentrate on issues that affect student growth and students first, and that we are student-oriented, and that we also protect the rights of all employees that are employed by this county. Also, going to miss working with Ralph, Bishop Love, he was a great asset to this board, and I hope him the best for his health. And again, congratulations to the D.H. Conley cheerleading staff for their win. That was tremendous.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Ms. Waters?
All right. I would like to issue a thank you and a praise for Chicago School and their guidance counselor, Marcia Truman, Terman, Terman. And I had a friend call me the last day of school before Christmas and said, guidance counselor just called me and told me I needed to get to the school before they closed. And I said, well, it's early release, you've got to hurry. She said she'd be there until I could get there. And they had, for his grandchildren, they couldn't get in touch with the mother, and for the grandchildren, they had clothing, uniforms, likely used uniforms, and they said likely used toys and games. But you've never seen such a slew of stuff, and if they did that for every child that they identified as having need, that is, that was like heaven. And he was most appreciative, and the children were too, and the parents were. But praise to her, she was, she was somebody that would make you really believe in our schools.
Thank you for that. Ms. Waters, Ms. Little?
Happy New Year, everyone, and congratulations to D.H. Conley only for their cheerleader, but they also hosted an excellent holiday basketball tournament, and it was very well-attended, and congratulations to South Central for winning it, being the number-six seed, and they marched right through it and won. Ms. Carrie, sitting over there. But no, it was, actually, they did a great job with it, it was well-attended, and the cheerleaders were all, I actually, I don't even think the cheerleaders were there over the holidays, but anyway, it was well-done. And I'm looking forward to working with this board for the year coming up, and exams will be here before we know it, so we need to encourage our kids to study hard.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Ms. Camnitz?
I'll add my Happy New Year to the others that have already been expressed, and thank you to Mark for being willing to take on this responsibility. He's already got a lot on his plate, and I think it's very generous that you're willing to get us through this year, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. Ms. Williams?
I'd just like to say Happy New Year to everybody, and I would like to thank our students throughout the county for saving me some money, because once I went to the mall and saw all the artwork that was at the mall, absolutely beautiful pieces, and they were at every grade level, but there was one in particular, because I'm just curious about my district, a young lady had done a pair of heels. I don't know where she got them, but they were hot, and I mean, they were just like on point, and she done, she had, she had did an excellent job. I don't know if I said that correctly, but by the time I got finished walking through, looking at all the artwork, I hadn't spent any money, so I'm going to Greensboro the weekend, and I'll get to do it then, all my Santa Claus money. So I just look forward to another year of us getting the work done, grinding it out, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for what Jill said about taking on the role of responsibility you also work, for taking on the role of responsibility, and I look forward to good things amongst our senior staff this year. I look forward to working with you guys, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you, board members, for your comments. At this time, if there's no further business from the board, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn.
Mr. Forrest has moved that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Williams in further discussion. Not, let's vote.
Oh, I did. I promise.
Ms. Little, Ms. Counsel?
I did it so soon. There you go.
Still receiving yours, Benji? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Have a good evening.